I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 8, 2025. There, I do need to read the Notice of Option to Recession into Executive Session pursuant to ARS 38431.02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the Commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the Commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public. We'd go into executive session for legal advice and discussion with the Commission's attorney on items listed on the following agenda pursuant to I... IRS. ARS. You know where my mind is at, huh? 38431.02... No. .03A3. Boy, I cannot read today. Roll call.
Carol Mandino.
I'm present, and just so you know, you listed me as vice chair, and you forgot to list Mary as vice chair and Mia's chair.
I apologize for that.
So I'll just... I'm just... So the minutes come out correctly when you do them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Christine Sheehy.
Here.
CJ Lukey.
Here.
Joshua Maher. Mary Norton.
Here.
Ian Sharp.
Present.
Megan Weller. Thank you.
This is time for a public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address the Commission on any subject within their jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the Commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the Commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the Commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Is there any public comment at this time? Hearing and seeing no one... No one online, is that correct?
Nothing in our email.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move from public comment to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on Wednesday, December 11, 2024.
Move to approve the minutes.
There's been a motion to approve the minutes as written. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved by CJ and seconded by Ian to approve the minutes as written. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. We'll move into public hearing. Item A, zoning code text amendment, PZ 2400217. It's the city's request to modify zoning code provisions in Chapter 10-40. And specific to zones, Division 10-40.30. And I will let... I will let you go into more detail.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ben. It's publicly owned land. There are but a few pieces of land that are privately held. They are not really large developable parcels. They're sort of... There were some property exchanges between some of the school district properties and some private property owners. So there's some little remnant pieces that are in the PF zone. So this is our first step into this urban farm land use. As there's more conversation about the development of food and within the city in our new regional plan, as it is developing, and so we're likely to expand this use beyond. We do currently have a project that is looking to partner with the city on a piece of city-owned land that is on public facility that does need this text amendment in order to move forward. And so that's why you're seeing this ahead of, you know, our regional plan and new policies. But with that said, what this looks like is... And so that's the why. What we're doing is we're adding the primary land use of urban farm only to the public facility zone. It would be a permitted use by right. In looking at this, one of the closest uses to urban farm was our community garden. So community garden is really a facility that's intended for a neighborhood, a group of residents to get together. This urban farm is sort of just... It's a bit of a step above, and it is more intended for commercial operation. Now, our community garden standards do allow some limited commercial operations as well. So while going through this process and updating the code, we thought it might be well-served if we looked at those community garden standards as well. So when we created this land use, we also created some specific to-use standards, and we wanted to compare back and forth between community garden. So we did some work to clarify a few things. In the... So we do create specific to-use standards. We clarified some of those standards under community garden, and essentially, it was a realigning format. Every time I touch specific to use, I'm trying to make them all match throughout. I know that's really boring and probably will be annoying as we go through all of this, but you will see that consistently throughout. And someday, I will get all specific to uses in the same order. It's a dream. The next... The biggest thing we did in community garden was we made it really clear that there are not parking requirements for a community garden, that really the on-street parking that's adjacent or any use that is affiliated where shared parking can be accommodated is not required, and additional landscaping standards are not required. So we haven't been doing those for community gardens, but it just makes it now abundantly clear. So we basically took those community garden standards and built upon them for urban farms. Same is true with urban farms. We're not going in and requiring paid parking areas for the urban farm. We're not expecting these to be areas where the public is coming on the regular, except that an urban farm may have volunteers, it may have... It may have some public events. We have built in some provisions for permitting for those events, either through what's called a temporary use permit or a special use permit. Temporary use permit is when something's being held on private property. A special use permit is just if something is on city property, and they run through different divisions in the city. So we've gone through and created those standards. We simplified some of the storm water management criteria. Previously, for community gardens, it said, no, there should be no water going off-site. Just not really a reality. So we met with stormwater, got those codes, and got that standard in alignment. It's basically our LID standard. So we've come up with something that we think works really well. And lastly, we've created a definition of what's in that urban farm. It does allow for commercial sales, basically a little bit beyond a community garden. It's sort of one step between, like, heavy-duty urban agriculture and a community garden. So it's just sort of that intermediary step. It would allow them to have accessory animals as already permitted in city code within the zone and based on the zoning district that they would be in. So if you have any questions on this particular amendment, I'll just run through. The Flagstaff Regional Plan already has... Yes?
I do have one question, and it may have been answered last time, and I may not remember, but are they required, if they have employees, to have onsite parking? Urban?
No.
No?
No. It's unlikely that there would be a reg... Like, a full-time onsite person. It's more coming to the site and tending the urban farm. So it's... I mean, it's not like somebody is there all of the time. The particular site that is... That's currently being considered is right adjacent to our public... Our new Public Works yard, where there is a substantial parking field.
Thank you.
So... Yeah?
I just said, "thank you."
Okay. Perfect. And so the findings for this rezoning is that it needs to be in conformance with the regional plan. I'll tell you, the new regional plan has a ton more goals and policies right now that push this, but, I mean, allow and encourage urban agriculture, support and encourage regional agriculture. Our carbon neutrality plan also encourages sustainable consumption, which includes encouraging low-carbon food consumption. So all of these are in alignment with existing goals and policies. The proposed amendment is not anticipated to be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare. I have never heard one complaint about a community garden of these types of facilities. We have sort of a step above a community garden now that's not far from the old Public Works yard, and it... It looks almost exactly... In terms of looking, it looks exactly like a community garden to anybody from the outside. And then, the proposed amendment is internally consistent, and it is. It follows the existing format. And again, we're matching formats throughout the code. So staff is recommending that the Planning and Zoning Commission, in accordance with the findings, make a recommendation to the City Council for approval of the zoning code text amendment. I will say, there are some supporters in the audience of this amendment. We have folks from sustainability if you should have more questions.
All right. Tiffany, I'm sorry you're here with a little cold today.
A little bit.
Maybe it's getting better. I don't know. Oh, good. Okay. So does anybody have any questions for Tiffany? Anybody? Yes. Mary?
Not really a question, per se. I'm very much in favor of adding urban farms to the public facilities portion of the code. Where I'd really like to see this, a little bit of aside, where I'd really like to see it added at some point is in the... To the residential zones.
Yes.
Is that something that is being considered? You know, there's sort of a nationwide or a movement, a creative movement that's seen across the country for agri-hoods, where there's, instead of big develop... You know, big master plan developments having golf courses and rec centers, they have urban farms. And knowing that there are being golf courses discussed for parcels south of the 40 in the JW Powell corridor, it'd be really nice to have these creative options. So is that something that's maybe coming down the pipe?
Yes. I would like to say that we are trying to consider, in light of all of the other things we have going on, and as we look at our other standards in our residential zones, yes, I think we want to expand. We also want to look at how we incorporate food into landscaping requirements as well. So yes, we want to go above and beyond. It's all coming down the line, but this one was kind of like an emergent issue that needed to get done right away. But we've built the basic... The basic building block, and it'll be really easy to move that on into other zones as we move forward. So you'll probably see it grouped with maybe a much larger amendment.
Does anybody have any other questions for Tiffany? Does anybody in the audience want to speak or have any questions or concerns? Anybody online? No? All right. Do we have someone who would like to make a motion? Ian?
Regarding PZ 24-00217, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission, in accordance with the findings presented in this report, recommend to the City Council approval of the city code text amendment.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Mary has seconded the motion. Any other discussion or questions? All right. Then we'll go for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Tiffany. You did a great job.
Thank you. This one was easy.
What?
I have great... This one was easy, and I have great teammates, so...
Okay. Well, we'll move on to... Looks like you'll be presenting again, since you're not leaving the podium. Zoning code text amendment, PZ 2400216. If you would like to present again, Tiffany. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much. So this is a zoning code amendment to Chapter 1050, which is our resource protection standards. The resource protection standards only apply to properties that are in the resource protection overlay. For more background and information on that, the resource protection overlay is an overlay zoning district that was essentially applied every piece of vacant land that was over five acres in size in 1990. So if you think of the City of Flagstaff map, the core central part of Flagstaff was already developed. A lot of Eastside was already developed. None of those neighborhoods are in the resource protection overlay. So it's really going to be those newer subdivisions. It is within that whole John Wesley Powell corridor, really the area we know where probably a lot more new development is going to be happening in the City of Flagstaff. You know, it's definitely identified as a growth area. So, you know, everything that's been new since the 90s is within those resource protection overlay standards. The resource protection standards primarily focus on three resources. Those resources are... They are ordered in priority, the first being floodplains, the second being steep slopes, the third being forest resources. So with all of that being said, floodplains are generally regulated separately through our floodplain regulation standards that fall under our stormwater division. We do, in our resource protection overlay, have this really phenomenal thing. It's called a... We classify floodplains as either a rural floodplain or an urban floodplain. What is really great about the rural and urban floodplain is, is that when... With all of our regulations, we go through what's called a CRS audit. So we get rated by insurance... Insurance companies basically rate us for how well we regulate our floodplains. We're very high in that rating system. The higher the rating system, the lower your insurance rate, right? So there's a big boon to that. And for the tween city that we are, it's pretty phenomenal. I used to work on our CRS rating when I worked at the county. We were very low. So I know... I know firsthand how much work it takes and effort, and part of that rating system was originally based on our urban and rural floodplains. A lot of that stuff is sort of transitioning in terms of the urban and rural floodplains as we move towards the Rio to Flag project. As we move towards that project, a lot of properties in Flagstaff are going to come out of the floodplain as a whole. What I can tell you is, of the properties that are impacted by floodplains, they're not in the resource protection overlay. Again, when you think about the Rio and you think about areas that flood, they're much more... They're part of our urban core, our older neighborhoods. So Southside has a lot of flooding and so forth and so on. So while the resource protection overlay tries very hard to protect those, almost all new development is held to a very rigorous standard through our other ordinances and requirements. So just taking that into consideration. Other than that urban and rural designation, there are no specific standards in the resource protection overlay that regulate development in the floodplain. So development in the floodplain is still permitted. It is much more heavily regulated in the rural floodplain than it is in the urban, but it's still a permitted use, and it's... There's no percentage of land that has to be set aside as there is with both the slope and forest resources. So in terms of slope resources, there are... Is a percentage of slope resources that have to be set aside. It is for slopes, it does need to be a stretch of slope that is at least 100 feet long. So there is a dynamic there. And we start at slopes at 17%, which is actually pretty low in terms of preserving slopes. And then additionally, we have standards for tree resource protection standards. For both of these two, they're based on percentages. They are based on percentages that appear in each zoning district. So, you know, if you're in the residential zones, for example, for forest resources, you're going to preserve 50% of your tree resources. We have a whole point system based on the size of the tree. There's surveys, lots of calculations. If you're a planner, it'll drive you crazy. But commercial and industrial, their preservation rates are much lower. They are 30% and 20%. Open space is 30%. Residential is 50%. So you look at that and you think, wow, that's... That's pretty different, unusual. But here's the thing, is at the time when resource protection standards were being adopted, commercial, industrial, and development were our priority. Priorities change, right? So from 1990 today, we definitely have a new priority that's moving towards residential development. We know we need to look at these standards. So I'm starting you out with the story of the why behind we're doing this. You know, part of... Pretty soon, we're going to be coming to you with a report on our land availability, suitability study, and code analysis project that has certain recommendations towards supporting carbon neutrality and affordable housing in our community. One of those elements that's coming up as a barrier to those is our resource protection overlay standards. In no way, shape or form are, are we in any way talking about getting rid of our resource protection overlay standards. We're talking about doing it differently. So we will, in the future, be coming to you with an overhaul of our resource protection overlay standards. We will reassess our priorities, figure out how we can get the ba- biggest bang for our buck, um, in terms of preserving our resources and in terms of also increasing protection in terms of our wildland urban interface, which is also becoming increasingly part of this discussion in our resource protection overlay areas. If any of you are ever interested, I have a fun little tour that I do take people on. So if you're interested, you know, email me, I'll take you one by one. I won't take you all as a group because then I'd have to notice it. But just so you can see how subdivisions have developed over time with these standards.
So, so I, I'll get to you in a minute. But so while we're watching LA burn, um, currently, and it's very sad and there's a lot of structures and vehicles that have been lost in this fire and it's only, what, two days old? The new, the new standards that you're developing, might those help not, wi- with the, help not spread wildfires? And I know, I, I have a neighbor who told me her insurance went up three hundred dollars a month because we are in such a high fire zone. So will that help homeowners? Will that help with reduction of wildfires spreading?
Yes, that's the goal. I mean, part of the push, there's, the, the push to overhaul these standards is coming from multiple places. First, we've, we've, we've got a very vocal, um, fire department. Um, we've got some really, really smart people in the fire department who are walking us through and they're giving us new ways to even survey land and look at land. Um, they're starting to use LiDAR data. I mean, if you, if you watch council meetings, um, they've been to council fairly recently. They've talked about insurance rates, what all of this means. Now, is any one thing a cure all? No. But is that the goal? Yes, the goal of, of zoning codes is to protect public health, life and safety. Um, and aesthetics is certainly a part of that and we don't want to lose those features either. And, um, creating neighborhoods that have access to wild spaces and open spaces is also very important. And so, you know, we want to take that overall comprehensive approach at the resource protection overlay standards. So that, the question becomes Tiffany, why are you standing in front of us today with this amendment? And-
Tiffany, why are you standing in front of us with this amendment?
Right, so let's get into this amendment.
Wait, Mary had a question?
Yep. This has to do with sort of the history that you were talking about. So I wanted to, to, to see, like historically, you're saying that maybe back in the nineties, they were, um, focused on commercial. But it also makes sense that a commercial development is a larger building footprint, requires parking lot and everything. It would make sense that it would not have as much resource, and, and resources needed to be protected because they'd be on the perimeter of the parcel.
I would actually argue the opposite. And the reason why I would argue the opposite is, I would tell you that multifamily developments will have similar footprints and similar parking requirements to most commercial developments. That's one. And two, detached single family has to develop roads, which is going to be the topic of what we're going to talk about right now. But when you put in, when you have to develop a subdivision and all of the infrastructure and disturbance area that you have to create just to create seven thousand, nine thousand square foot or six thousand square foot or even three thousand square foot lots is pretty substantial. It's actually harder to do single family residential development in some cases than it is to do, um, the commercial and multifamily development. I will tell you, as a planner, time and time again, I can make multifamily and I can make the commercial work even with the current standards we have today of fifty percent on the multifamily. It, time and time again, where I run into resource issues is always been on subdivisions. And I will tell you that time and time again, you are all seeing single family subdivisions that do not meet minimum densities or are just barely hitting minimum densities. Part of our code analysis project is going in and running prototypes and models with all of the codes combined together. Can you actually achieve the densities we've set out in code? And the answer is no. In single family residential, the high that you can hit is about four units an acre. So when you really look at what resources do in a detached or even attached single family, when you create lots, you're taking about thirty percent of the total land area of that subdivision and setting it aside in resources.
And then you, how does it, um, factor in when, you know, like thirty years ago, nineteen nineties or so? You know, there, those parcels weren't thinned as much as they are now. They're mechanically thinned often, they're often thin before they're sold, before they're developed, before the resources are figured. So have we not just by doing that solved some of the problem right there? I mean-
So here's the thing, is the way that the resource protection standards were always written is thinning was always to have happened first. Okay? The standards say that now, that was always part of the requirement. So recently, the fire department presented the forest stewardship plan to council. That forest stewardship plan is what gives us the guidelines for how a property is to be thinned. They try not to call it thinning anymore. They, they call it like treatment or whatever. Now, how we thin property in nineteen ninety is not how we thin property today. The science has drastically changed, right? It was also different in two thousand from nineteen ninety and two thousand and ten than it, what it wa- is today. I would, I would listen going to that conversation, uh, that presentation that, um, was done. They, they actually took the hospital site where the hospital was looking at going because there was a, um, there was a grant. They went in and they did the thinning. They have LiDAR data to show what it looks like before and after, and then what the trees look like thinned. But over time, it's, I, I, they've taken me out in the field. I can explain it to you, you look through this prism, you can see the, the day. I, don't ask me to explain it because I, I really honestly can, I'm not the, I, I. But it used to be more methodical. It was like before, we thought all of the trees had to be ten, twenty feet apart. So yes, it's been done different over time. And we were not, we definitely have subdivisions that were not adequately thinned. Um, before we began the whole resource preservation. And again, I can take you on this tour and, and you'll see the difference between what something looks like today as opposed to what a development looked like in nineteen ninety. On top of all of this, we landscape, right? So we've got tree preservation and we've got landscaping. When you look at the newer subdivisions, you go, yeah, what are you talking about? It's no big deal, that landscaping's no big deal. Yeah, it's tiny, it's brand new. But twenty, thirty years from now, so, you know, if you want it, if you want a good juxtaposition in your head, go look at Boulder Point and then hop right over into, um, Presidio in the Pines, right? So Presidio is much newer. Look at Boulder Point, look at what the, look at how much debris is on those houses, on their roofs, um, how many trees you see, and then how much the landscaping has grown up in combination with all of that.
Would that not be fixed by having developers put in appropriate landscaping? I mean, we, we experienced that in our, in our own neighborhood, you know, where we're removing trees that were, cottonwood trees that were planted in little tiny spaces, you know?
It's not always the developers that are putting in the landscaping. A lot of times it's the homeowners.
Fair enough.
So, um, that's also part of it. I, I want you to know that with the larger resource protection overlay standards, we are going to also be looking at a, a series of firewise, um, standards as well. It, and it's not all fire related. You can absolutely have trees close to your home and have it not be a risk, right? But trees, ponderosa trees are very, um, adept at, uh, combat, like, they're not necessarily, when they're maintained and they're well-kept and we keep the large base yellow pines, is what I love to call them. Those trees are very healthy and they will withstand fire, right? It's, there's just, there's a smart way to do it. And when we do these resources on a, uh, a thirty, forty lots, you know, thirty, forty acre subdivision, you don't know how every house is going to lay out on every lot. And we end up with houses that are crammed up pretty tight against trees. And so we just, we need to come up with better standards. And so I want to allay the fears that this is not about getting rid of these standards. It's about being more thoughtful and creating something that's much more realistic, um, while still trying to achieve some basic densities within. And we want to come back to you with all of those facts, right? With the models that show, look, this is what the reality is. So it comes back to why we're here today, which is, um, we're proposing to make one small change. So we've got a lot of development coming through the pipeline in that John Wesley Powell corridor and we don't want to lose out now, um, in terms of coming up with some better designs. And, and I'll talk about this. So the proposal is to change the applicability standards. So right now, the only, um, the only part of a development, and this is primarily applying to subdivision development, right? This doesn't, this isn't about commercial, this isn't about industrial, and this isn't about multifamily. This is really about those core larger developments where they're coming in and they're dividing up the land. In those areas, the only thing we exempt out are major utility lines or major utility corridors and arterial roads. When you look at Flagstaff, we actually don't have a lot of arterial roads. They're, they're fewer and farther in between than you would think. So when we look at a development, it's really sometimes tho- those road right-ofways that get really tough for us to work on. So what, we want to make a small change now, um, that's not going to have a drastic impact. I would tell you, you would not even visually be able to tell the difference, um, between, uh, the way we manage right-ofways. We, we want to take them out of the calculation for resource protection. We want to leave resource protection on the lands that we know are, can suffice for development. All of the trees within the right-ofway have to go. The right-ofways are also where generally the utilities are located. So, um, all of those utilities are located in that corridor. So there's also an efficiency that's gained in doing that. The other, so some of the reasons of why we want to do this is we frequently run into subdivisions where we're seeing more and more streets terminate in cul-de-sacs. And it gets harder and harder for us to create the through streets and connectivity because of these resource protection standards and developers trying to meet all of their, like, to get their lots, get the number of lots they have, to build the roads that they need to build, and to make the roads connect, which we as planners thinks are fantastic ideas. Connecting roads also helps reduce, um, it also protects us in those wildfire situations. So when we have roads that terminate in cul-de-sacs, it makes it much more difficult for neighbors to exit and to get out of their neighborhoods. It can, it can cause conflict. So that is a big part of this and something that we are seeing as we move through with the development of subdivisions in these areas, um, is we lose out on some of the things that are also big priorities. I also want to point out that what our right-ofway standards were in nineteen ninety, when we developed these requirements, were much different than they are today. So we, that was part of what I walked through on the work session was that we were allowing road street sections that were twenty-eight feet wide, that were thirty feet wide. Our requirement now is fifty-six. And it has only incrementally grown and gotten wider over time. This is another point that we're going to talk about in the future in terms of what street wits have done to development and density as well because it's part of one of the contributing factors. But that's where we are today. That's where developments are coming in with pretty substantially wide rights of way. Um, so much wider, even almost to the point of being double of what they were, um, ten, fifteen years ago and even when the code was adopted. So here's the thing is, every time we add to code and we add another requirement, we add another thing on, we don't always go back and recalibrate all of the other standards. So what we're seeing happen is this, it's sort of like compaction, right? Where we keep adding standard upon standard upon standard and we're trying to get to a good development process. And we're really struggling on the planning side of, of trying to get this through. So, um, as development is occurring in the John Wesley Powell corridor, this is one of the considerations. Council is very much aware of this amendment moving forward. As much as we like to do everything really big and holistic and have it all be done together, the fear is we're not going to get it done in time and we're going to lose out on, in some of these areas. But this is a small change that will help us, um, we believe, get better subdivisions in the, in the interim until we can make the larger changes on code. That's it. That's the story.
So. So my question is, when we change these, if we change this requirement, which I don't have a problem with, but my question, we make the roads less wide, is that correct?
We are not currently doing that. We have a street standard now that's, the, the residential street standard is fifty-six feet wide.
Okay.
The right-ofway section is fifty-six.
But you said some people go be, or some-
Previously, we had standards that would let you go as small as twenty-eight feet wide, twenty-seven, twenty-eight feet wide. I, I think your neighborhood might have smaller street sections. Um, a lot of townhomes developments had smaller street sections.
Right. But-
So alls I'm saying is, is that the amount of land that a developer has to clear to, in order to create subdivision lots, has almost doubled in terms of, of right-ofway area i- since we adopted this code. Um, and it wasn't like, so the fifty-six foot right-ofway wasn't contemplated when we developed the fifty percent resource protection standard for residential subdivisions in nineteen ninety. We had a much smaller street section, um, than we do now. So I'm just trying to add on to why this is sort of a focal point of attention. This is why we're getting the feedback. We are of, you know, if we could just accept that, you know, the streets need to be created in order to create the lots, and that the resources have to be removed, then they can manage the remaining resources much better and that we're less likely going to have to condense things as close to the homes as we currently are doing.
I've read the text amendment again, right here. What you've written in our, um, agenda. And that makes sense, I think we've gotten way past that. And so that's, I guess that was my question, then I went and read this again. And I understand this from reading the small part of this, so, um, I'm wondering if anybody else has any questions or comments? Anybody? Mary?
Yeah, I like, I admit I kind of did a deep dive on this because I was really struggling with this. Um, and, um, trying to understand really where the, where the payoff is in the end result. Because, I mean, the end result is, you know, everything's based on, we want more housing. Um, and the things that we kind of keep chipping away at, or I see that we keep chipping away at, I just don't see them producing the end result of what we want is more housing, more, smaller floor plans that are more attainable for the people that live and work here. And then in the process, you know, we're giving up resources that are pretty important to the, to the people of Flagstaff. And, you know, we, we've kind of seen comments and, um, subtle complaints from applicants that, you know, our resource protection is significant and, and higher than any other cities and, uh, in other areas that developers build in. But it's because we, you know, yes, because we live in a volcanic landscape and we're at the foot of the peaks and we're in the middle of the world's largest forest, ponderosa forest. And so our natural resources are important to us. And my concern is, is that, you know, when lands are mechanically thinned, as they should be beforehand, and actually, I, I'm familiar with this in the sense that I'm the firewise, the firewise leader for my community. I'm the firewise, the firewise leader for my community. So I've done walks in the forest with the timber sales guy and, you know, the fire department and, and all of that. And I live within the area of the Southside Airport project where things are being thinned and, and tagged and things like that. So I do have that understanding of, of how they're doing that and how they thin and why they thin the way they do now. My concern is, is that everything's thinned and then a development plan is able to be laid out without any consideration of what is there. The streets just get put in. So those, those bigger ponderosas in clusters that were worth preserving during the thinning, there's no mind paid to that with, they want to put a road there because the road is going to come first in their consideration and then they'll deal with, deal with the resources that are remaining. And so that concerns me. Um, being able to connect roads, yes, I, I see the benefit of that. But what happens is when they develop these small little parcels and tracks, um, even when it's owned by, you know, the entire master developer, they're not even leaving roads to be connected to their next parcel, you know? And so I find that kind of frustrating and we're trying to fix something that maybe they're not willing to fix. Um, so also the, um, and I'm going to try to, because I'm, because I'm going to vote to deny on this one, I'm going to be specific in, in the findings.
Do you want to finish going through the, just, oh, just to go through the, the findings and the staff summary first? Okay.
Yeah, that's what I, I do want to talk about the finding.
Okay.
So thank you, Tiffany.
And, and I want to say that all, all of your comments are heard. Um, you know, I really do want to take you on the tour sometime. And I, they've made me also go through firewise training, fire department, I have my little cert. Um, I've done it with the other HOA, um, representatives. So, um, I, I, in no way, I just want to confirm, like, in no way, shape or form am I trying to say like, this one change is going to change firewise condition, or this one change is going to, um, is, is going to make every development come in, be perfect. What it's going to do is help us get better, achieve the goals that we're trying to get to, right? I'm not going to, I'm not going to sell you a story that every development is going to come in with the perfect set of streets and a, or a grid network, which we would love. Um, but I do want to say that if, in reality, if I could put you on a property and, and say, tell me how many, what the percentage of trees were saved on this, you wouldn't know the difference between 30% and 50%. Because I didn't, until I've done it time and time again, um, in terms of recognizing the trees. Now, I have gone to sites and I have seen big trees have to go. Um, roads are generally laid out based on topography. Um, so the trees become less of a consideration with roads. Uh, slopes are definitely a huge consideration in the layout of roads just because of the cost, right? But I, I'll, I would, I would just add that, like, I would love to take you on this tour because I think we're going to have more changes in the future and you, you need to vote how you need to vote, and I'll stop from there. But, um, but when you see it out in the field, it is much different. So just the goals and policies that talk about resource protection overlay, um, I would point out, there is a policy in the regional plan that really strikes me in terms of this amendment, and that is when planning for future growth, consider tribal, cultural, and natural resources in balance with community needs, right? And that's what we're trying to do here. We're not trying to eliminate the preservation of resources. We're trying to balance community needs. Um, and we're trying to do it in a way that'll, um, get us there before we can, um, make all of the, the larger substantial changes. Um, the proposed amendment, um, the goals and policies do support, and specifically that policy, because it is talking about doing things in balance and isn't all one or all the other. And so we just want to reiterate again that this amendment is meant to be small. It isn't meant to push us to the side of, of seeing a huge amount of resources removed. Um, and then the 10-year housing plan also contains policies that say evaluate and amend the RPO overlay standards to ensure that the minimum densities can be met on most sites. Again, we do have some preliminary data that shows us that that's not possible, um, including making the requirements for residential sites to be similar to those for commercial sites, uh, evaluate resource protection overlay standards in terms of consistent application across each zone, and allow for greater, um, greater maximum densities. The carbon neutrality plan includes provisions about protecting existing forest resources and meaningful open spaces, support planning and zoning efforts that protect natural resources, including surface water resources, reduce urban encroachment into the forest, such as promoting infill as supported in the regional plan. Um, and then lastly, the amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest. Um, staff believes that it will not be detrimental, that the, the actual visible district, difference and what people will feel when they're visiting a subdivision or when they live in that subdivision will be minimal. And with that, staff is recommending approval. And now I finished the presentation. I'll stop talking about it.
Tiffany, thank you so much for your presentation. I'm going to ask any other commission members if they have questions, and I have one.
Um, Tiffany, I have a question on, um, on some of the tree preservation. For example, and I, I agree, I would support this amendment because I've done a ton of subdivisions and large projects, and even though you try to preserve some of these things, you can't. And one of the issues is, and I noticed this up here, um, on these resource protection plans, a lot of trees are preserved. And I wonder, do people go back and track several years later? Because a lot of these trees won't make it. They cut into, there's a lot of retaining walls, there's cuts, so they're disturbing the root system. I have a degree in landscape architecture and you're, they'll be up for a while, but I'm not as familiar with the ponderoses, how much impact they can take. Like in the valley, we could, you know, preserve cactus, and there's companies that specialize them in that, and we could take all the plants out of the right-of-way and replant them somewhere else. Obviously, up here, you're not going to do that with some of the ponderose and the large plants. So I'm wondering, is there any thought put into, you go to these resource plans, and with all the retaining walls, the cuts, the fill, all of that, these trees aren't going to make it. And you won't know that for probably several years. Have, when you guys have been researching this, has any of that come up?
Sure. And we actually have standards of encro, how far you can encroach. So ponderoses do have a shallow root ball. Um, we prohibit encroachment of more than 20% on the tree's canopy. So, um, you know, the idea is now, in a perfect, you know, we also require that tree resource fencing be placed on these construction sites. Um, we have four planners. We have four planners, and those are the people that are ensuring that, that construction fencing, as well as doing all of the, the work in this office, those are the people that are making sure that those, that that fencing is, is there and is up. And to say that it does, it's always perfect, or that there are oopses that also happen on development cases, um, I mean, that's why, sometimes I feel like I know where all the tree bodies are buried. Um, I hate to say it, but I mean, oopses hap, happen. Um, and trees do die later on, just be, I mean, somebody could have driven over the root system and that alone could have killed the tree. Um, it definitely happens. Uh, it's not a perfect system. And, and yeah, so you, but we do have provisions in place. We try very hard, but yeah, we're, we're that tween city, right? We, we've got some pretty, we've got some pretty large developments going on. We've got a lot of things moving and shaking the city in all different areas, and we do it all with like four amazing planners. So.
So, does anybody else have any questions or concerns? How, um, online, we have some...
No, me.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Alex.
Um, I just wanted to add, we've also had cases where when the contractor first goes in and starts clearing the property, they're exposing trees that until then have been in a nice, cool, shady spot and are suddenly all alone with the sun drawing them out. Um, those tend not to make it. I think staff's favorite way to save trees is to like, find a little area and set it off to the side and develop the rest of the site. Um, that's not always done, but that's certainly, certainly, I would dare to say, the easiest to, um, to implement, so.
And we've tried to incentivize that in other code amendments, um, trying to cluster. And I, and I think that's where you're going to see the standards going in the future, where we're trying to keep more meaningful spaces in neighborhoods.
So before Mary, I just want to say, one of the things that, you know, I'm, I'm going to vote yes on this, and part of the reason again is what we talked about earlier is, you know, what I talked about was, you know, neighborhoods that now have these high insurance rates because of the trees being preserved and right, believe me, I have two trees that are very close to my home. I had them cut back this summer. Um, you know, we planted other trees that are close to the home and we're, we're just in this high fire district. The other thing is, while we were sitting here, I was just going on, looking at, um, what may become, because I, you know, I'm all for affordable housing, which this community doesn't really have. And, um, I was looking at lot sizes of my daughter's house and my son's house as opposed to my house. And I'm on pretty much a quarter acre, a little over a quarter acre of land. My son is at half of that, so he's at a, what is that? What's half of a quarter, 12.5% acre? Is that right? An eighth of an acre. Thank you. You can see why math wasn't my high point in college. Okay, so a quarter acre in my daughter's is just a little above that. Um, and they both had affordable houses when they bought their houses. And that's kind of what this community needs, and we're not going to achieve that by, um, including, you, you know, this is including the right-of-way. Currently, we have the right-of-way that's included in the, in the, um, public, no, in the, oh, what am I, the, the resource protection plan. And I, I think this will help that and help us achieve more affordable housing while also preventing wildfires on properties. Those are two hu, huge reasons why I would approve this, um, measure. And, um, if it'll help us get more affordable housing in the community, I'm all for that. I'll go to Mary with the next comment.
Yeah, I just first wanted to add on to the question that you had in the clustering. And, and I know that that's been where it's been going, which is good. And I, you know, I would like to think that those solutions along the way of, um, through your process, through the development process, you know, is the way to go as opposed, as opposed to this. Um, yes, the trees do die. Um, I, the, the later phases in my own community, which are now, um, almost 10 years old, maybe a little less, um, the HOA has to budget between $5,000 to $10,000 per year to remove dead trees that don't make it, ponderoses. So that is a, a factor, and we do have too many trees close to our houses. So the idea of this clustering, um, and, you know, saving, uh, certain areas, um, is, is definitely the way to go on that. Um, and it, yes, you're right, it, it does take maintenance, uh, you know, and keeping track of them. Um, so I guess, you know, as I said before, um, you know, after I read through everything and dove into the other goals and policies, um, in, in the regional plan and the code, the reasons why I'm going to vote against this, however, the, however, I assume it'll be a, a motion to approve, and I will vote against it, um, because, um, in finding one, I found that there were plenty of other goals and policies, um, in environmental planning and conservation sections, um, as well as land use, um, that I think supports protecting our, uh, our natural resources and that there are other ways to achieve these, attempt at these goals. Um, so I have a whole list, I'm sure you don't probably need to, to have them all. But anyway, um, I've got a whole list of, of those. Because I, I don't see this granting us the end result that we want, um, I don't think that this supports finding two, because I don't think it is in the public's best interest, um, when we're not going to, there's no guarantee that we're going to, to get what we hope to achieve out of this. Um, we're just, there's no concessions, there's no collaboration, um, with the developers to say, okay, if we reduce the, the tree resources for you, will you build more of your smaller floor plan? Will you restrict short-term rentals? Will, you know, uh, will you entertain the idea of building small, smaller product? We don't, we're, we're just doing this with a hope and a prayer. So I think out of the public interest, I, I can't find, uh, support for finding, for finding two. And then in finding three, I feel that it, it contradicts our own code in the very next section of 1050 dot 90 dot 030, priority for resource protection, um, where there's a pretty defined, uh, guideline on how the forests are protected. And, um, I, I think that that, this doesn't support that in the sense that, you know, we're trying to preserve forests that are connected to floodplains, that are within slopes, that are larger, um, that are in clusters. And if we allow a development to just be planned first without considering where those resources are, where those clusters are, where those older ponderoses are, um, I think it, I think it contradicts the very next section of our own code. So those are the reasons that I will be voting no.
Okay. Is there, are there any other comments or questions from the commission, commissioners? Is there any online? Okay, so Alex, if you can, um, go to the people online?
Um, if the people online who would like to speak can raise their hands. I see Lindsay on screen, but I also saw Guillermo's hand move up. So Carol, let you decide who goes first.
Well, go ahead, Lindsay, since you're on screen already, and then we'll, we'll go to the next person.
Uh, Chair, Vice Chair, thank you so much. I would have let Guillermo go first, so either one of us, but thank you very much, Chair. Thank you for letting me speak on this item, and thank you to Tiffany and staff for working on this item. It is a complicated issue, and on a whole, we are exceptionally supportive. Oh, Lindsay Shuvi, Gametown Burnham, 40 North Central, Phoenix, Arizona, 85004, although you all know that. Um, so again, the standards have evolved over time. The width of the roads have evolved over time. So again, thank you to staff. We think this is a minor change, but it will have a major impact. As you may recall, I was up there in person asking for a 1.5% reduction. Remember that, I think it was maybe about a year ago. If we would have had this and tr, and, uh, streets would have been out of it, we would have been okay. So again, that was a project where we could not meet minimum density for a single-family home without a 1.5 reduction, and, and the road was the issue. Here is the only request I have of you. If you look at the, at the, and I don't even have slides this time, I've got one small change that I'm requesting. Um, if you look in subsection B, it says within public rights-of-way. I would request that you strike the word "public" and that it's just "rights-of-way" for streets and major utility facilities. There are streets that are private streets that are built to city standards that have the same issue. So I, um, with that, we believe that this RPO exemption should apply to both public and private streets, um, as long as they're built to city standards and, and it's a request of the city that we build. So whether it's public or private, whether we maintain them as private owners or the city maintains them. So with that, uh, very much supportive of this. Thank you, Tiffany, for all your hard work and just respectfully... Thank you, Tiffany, for all your hard work, and just respectfully request, uh, we strike the word "public", and it is, this, this is for all rights of way for streets and major utility, uh, facilities. Thank you so much, and available for questions if anyone has any.
Thank you for that. My personal opinion is it should stay public rights of way, especially since the city of Flagstaff does not promote private, um, streets as much as they may do in other communities. So thank you, and I'll go to Guillermo?
Thanks, everybody. Guillermo Cortez, uh, with SWI Ardua Engineering here in town. I've been one of your civil engineers.
Your address?
Yes, 110 West Dale, Flagstaff, Arizona, couple blocks up.
Probably need to reset the timer, too.
Yeah, well, thank you for letting me speak, um, tonight. I think, yes, Tiffany did a great job as one of your civil engineers. We've been doing subdivisions, commercial projects, uh, over the last couple decades. So very familiar, I think Tiffany did an actually incredible job to talk about some of the difficulties we've, we've come up against in, in, uh, the years as things changed, roadway widths, uh, and requirements and so forth. So I 100% support this. It has been difficult. We've done some of the smaller affordable type of projects like Woodshire on Butler, where we try to do kind of that small pad. And even with some resource protection, um, decreases because of, of the locations with bus stops and providing bicycle, uh, parking and everything else, just even with some of those reductions, we were barely meeting, uh, those tree resources. So it was very difficult. So we even had some trees that were actually close to some of those small little pad houses. And some folks are even having problems getting some insurance on that. So I think it would be better, um, to be able to go ahead and, and take this into account. It would help us, I think it would help the tree resources overall, uh, and keep insurance rates down. Now that, uh, Lindsay spoke up about the public right of way as well, I think I do agree with that as well. Reason being is, is any private street is actually, has to be designed and built to city of Flagstaff standards. We can't, we can't, uh, build or design a street that doesn't meet those standards. So I would agree that possibly removing public is, is actually okay, just in case for future. The reason the city asks for those streets, private streets to be, uh, built, uh, to public standards is just in case they are converted to public in the future, so. Thank you for letting me speak. And, uh, again, also available for questions as, as we've been working with tree resources for, for decades. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else online have any concerns or questions? Hearing none, does any, does the commission have any questions for? Oh, hold on a sec, okay, so we have one more person who's in, in public who would like to speak. Go ahead. Reset the timer, please, and if you would state your name and the address for your record, for the record.
Hi, my name is Charity Lee. I'm the entitlements manager for Capstone Homes. Address 3605 South Flagstaff Ranch Road. And we're, um, very pleased to have this amendment before you today. We, we are working on multiple projects in Juniper Point as well as Canyon Del Rio. And this text amendment will make a huge difference for us to be able to make our density requirements. One thing I will add to is, we would really love to have all roads included, including local roads. One of our developments that we're proposing is in Juniper Point, and it's going to be on the north side of Juniper Point. That will be coming to you soon as a rezone case. We're planning 998 units on that site. Largely, it will be, um, multifamily and, uh, and rental project. Well, if our rental units aren't allowed, if we're not allowed to take advantage of the text amendment because they're, they're local private roads, that will be harder to get our density requirements on those subdivisions. So we would really like to maximize those sites and maximize the density. Both Juniper Point and Canyon Del Rio, there's a lot of topography on both of those developments. And it's very hard to meet the resources because of the topography and also the density requirements. And so this text amendment largely helps development for Flagstaff. And as we all know, and as you mentioned to Commissioner, that our goal is to build more homes for Flagstaff. The more homes you have in Flagstaff, the more affordable all homes will be. So, and that's largely not just, um, for-sale product, but also rental product. So I think it makes sense to have this text amendment include all roads so that you, um, can expand and, and build more units. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. So, um, thank you. And does, do the commissioners have questions? Or Ian, did you have some, okay, go ahead, CJ.
Yeah, my only comment is related to Juniper Point, and 22% of the homes in there are short-term rentals. So I know we're saying, you know, you're making a case of why we should do this in order to increase affordable homes, but the, all the things are related, so.
Yeah, and, and unfortunately, we can't regulate short-term rentals. So, um, that, that's a problem for the entire state of Arizona because of our legislature, so. Ian?
Yeah, I feel like I'll be, beat a dead horse a little bit, so I'll be careful here. But I, I, I agree with Guillermo and Lindsay on this. You know, as an engineer who's designed these things, I, I get frustrated with all the conflicting rules that we try to follow. And you find yourself just wishing somebody would be smart about, okay, what can we let go aside? I'm glad you guys are doing that, you guys have done a good job here. And when I read through this as I was getting ready for this meeting, I'm kind of surprised that there's been this much discussion. It seems kind of like a no-brainer to me. But I had the same thought that, um, the, the online participants did, is why not include pub or private streets? So you have an answer for that?
Absolutely. So, you know, we, so when I talked about previously, we allowed streets that were much smaller. Those were private streets. We had a significant influx of, uh, those developments, the HOAs that got left with those private streets that came back to the city and said, we want you to maintain those streets. And we said, sorry, you didn't build them to city standards. So one of the reactions to that was to require all streets to be built to publicly, public city standards. Now, what's the difference then between a private street and a public street? We don't maintain a private street. So what is the only benefit to having a private street is to gate your community, which you lose out on street connectivity for private streets. So when we are here in front of you today, talking about wanting to increase connectivity and the thoughts and feelings in this community's, um, and previous goals and policies in regards to gated communities, that's why the recommendation today stands. It doesn't mean that as we move forward and we look at the larger resource protection standards, that we don't get there with private streets and we don't get back to having maybe different private street standards. But today, we wanted to commit to making the smallest possible change we needed to in order to move these development cases further and to be true to the street connectivity issue we're trying to achieve.
Okay, so, um, Ian, does that answer your question? Okay, Mary?
Yeah, I want to be in support of, of the public word remaining in there, um, and supporting what Tiffany just explained. I live in a community with private streets with public access, so yes, our HOA, um, maintains, snow removed, resurfaces them. Every year, there's something to do on the streets. What happens when you have private streets is obviously the HOA assumes that. HOA fees end up being high. That in turn also affects affordability of somebody buying a home because you have to qualify, um, for the HOA, you know, fee as part of your expenses to owning a home. So again, this is just more of a chip, chip, chip away at all of this. Make the streets be, I, I support having a state, um, having the, the word remain in there as public. Yeah, it's just, it's, it's too much to ask.
Okay, anybody else have a comment or question? Hearing and seeing none, does somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I will, if I can remember what to say, let's see.
Under the staff recommended action, look at that.
The staff recommends, okay. So in accordance with the findings of this report, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends to the City Council the approval of the City Code Text Amendment.
Or PZ 2400216?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that, um, motion?
Second.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Going to ask if there's any other comments or questions, discussion? Yes, as, as written, yes. Hearing no other comments or questions, I'm going to go to the vote. All those in favor of this zoning code text amendment, PZ 2400216, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
And you have, um, the reasons for her nay from earlier discussions. So this passes. Thank you for, Tiffany, for all your background and research and present, and presenting to us today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, um, this is why you're my favorite commission. Don't tell the other commissioners.
All right, we'll go into general business, which is consideration and approval of a preliminary plat request from EPS Group Incorporated, um, on behalf of CDR Development for preliminary plat approval at 377 East Whitestone Drive for a 50-lot family, single-family subdivision. It's not Tiffany again.
No, I'm not, I'm not Tiffany, unfortunately.
So I, I just looked up and saw a different person, so sorry. If you'll go ahead and give us a presentation.
Can you hear me all right? I, I just want to make sure the mic's.
Yeah, yes, we can hear you, thank you.
My name is Ben Mihia, I'm a planner with the City of Flagstaff. For your consideration today, we have a preliminary plat request for the lookout at Canyon Del Rio, also known as parcel N of Canyon Del Rio. You've already said this, but the request is filed by EPS Group Incorporated on behalf of CDR Dev Corp Limited. The site is located at 3770 East Whitestone Drive, and the request is for a 50, uh, 50-lot, single-family subdivision. This would be both attached and detached, single-family homes on 7.1 acres using Plan Residential Development or PRD standards. This is in the MR zone or medium-density residential and is also within the Resource Protection Overlay. Staff approved the preliminary plat on December 10th, 2024. And to give you a little context of where this is sitting, it is a very blurry image, and I'm sorry about that. It's not your eyes. It's, uh, it's how I cropped the image, unfortunately, sorry. Uh, let me, uh, paint a picture a little bit for you. Maybe I can make it clearer. This is kind of central to the, the Canyon Del Rio site. On the next slide, I'll, I'll show you, uh, kind of a zoomed-out image. Uh, this is where Whitestone meets Fourth Street, the northwest, uh, corner. To the north of this site is Canyon Del Rio Block K2, which is in the Highway Commercial or HC Zone. To the south is Canyon Del Rio Block R1, uh, which is in the MR zone. To the east is a vacant parcel, uh, in the RD zone. And to the west, a J, directly adjacent to the site, is Canyon Del Rio Block J2. Across the street from Whitestone is also Blocks O and P. Uh, J2 is in the high, uh, high-density residential zone. O and P are in, uh, MR or medium-density residential. There's a less blur, yeah, it's still pretty blurry, um, image of the entirety of Canyon Del Rio's site. In this, you can see a red dot that I actually didn't realize I had included in the image, showing the, uh, kind of the western corner of, of the lot in question. But to give you some, some context for Canyon Del Rio's history, uh, in June of 2019, City Council approved the rezoning request, development agreement and preliminary block plat, which allowed for the development of Canyon Del Rio. The original proposal included, uh, 1,426 residential dwelling units and 225,000 square feet of commercial development. The residential components or the residential units were ranging from single-family to high-density residential, uh, projects. And additionally, there was the, the commercial spaces and open space all on, uh, 261 acres. Let's, let's take a look at the, the plat itself. Again, this is 50 attached and detached, uh, single-family lots, taking access from Whitestone Drive, uh, both in the center with Boulder Ridge Drive, as well as to the west of the site, coming kind of through Block J2 with, uh, lava rock loop. The proposal would preserve 3.17 acres as common space, which is 44% of the net lot area, which is well in exceedance of the 15% requirement.
So before you go on, I, I do have a question about the, because we were talking about cul-de-sacs before.
Yeah.
And that cul-de-sac, it looks like will be a throughway at some point?
No.
No, I'm looking at that wrong?
There's a, uh, detention basin where the, uh, the cul-de-sac terminates. And there's substantial grade, I, I don't think that would be feasible necessarily, but I would allow.
So there's a big slope there, so, yeah, okay, thank you.
A big detention basin, meeting the stormwater requirements there.
When I was looking at it and I can't. I don't know, I need an, I need to get my eyes done.
All right, uh, do you mind if I move on?
Uh, please do, sorry.
So as I previously stated, this is in Resource Protection Overlay, so a, a natural resource protection plan was required. First, we're looking at the forest resources. They are proposing, or the proposal is providing, uh, 39% preserved. The requirement is actually 47.5% be preserved. Uh, there was a, a 5% administrative reduction to the resource, uh, requirement, which resulted in the 47.5% requirement. Now, obviously, I know, um, Chair Mandino, you said you weren't good at math, but you undoubtedly, uh, recognized that this is a bit of a deficit. The Canyon Del Rio Development Agreement does allow for banking of resources, and that's what's been done here is, uh, they're, they're taking out a withdrawal from, from their bank. It's, uh, resources elsewhere in, in residential parcels can be utilized, uh, where a deficit is required. And so that is, that's what's occurring here. We also have a, a separate slide for, uh, for slope. So as you had already heard with Tiffany's presentation, slope is also a requirement, 17% being the minimum going up. And there's three ranges of, uh, of slope category. In this project, they're exceeding all of the, the requirements for, for slope preservation. So that would contribute to the, to the bank where applicable. The first finding is that the, uh, proposal meets zoning code standards for plan residential development in the MR zone. Staff has determined that that is the case. The density proposed is a gross density of, of seven units per acre and a net density of 8.7 units per acre, which is within the, uh, within the range of six to nine units per acre required in the MR zone. I did, uh, kind of mess up the last part, so I'm gonna have to wing this one. But, um, ultimately, uh, specific building envelopes weren't used. Uh, in this case, we're using a, a, a plan residential development clustering of, of those units. And that's why they have, uh, exceeded the common space requirement, uh, to preserve resources. So instead of, of using building envelopes where you're presuming. So instead of using building envelopes where you're preserving on individual lots, they are kind of meeting their resources where they can on individual tracts, or separate tracts from the lots. The lot sizes are meeting the MR standards for PRDs, or PRD standards for MR, maybe is a better way to say that, with the minimum lot size being 2,000 square feet, and it ranges up to 3,363 square feet. Let's go approximately in case I missed one slightly higher or something. The typical lot dimensions are approximately 25 feet wide by 80 feet deep. That's for an attached, single-family. For detached, they're showing a 30-foot wide by 80-foot deep. The development standards are being met here. I provided a table. So the PRD standards allow for, in addition to the minimum lot area of 2,000 square feet, maximum lot coverage of 80%. We talked about the dimensions. Front setback of five feet, 20 for parking. Side setbacks of three feet, 10-foot for street side, which doesn't apply with this proposal. Or where it's being attached, obviously, you bring in that setback down to zero feet so they can, in fact, attach. And then a rear setback of three feet. And that's what has been proposed here. Now, I believe this is the first plat with new PRD standards, so this is a little bit new. I'd be a trailblazer here in how to present this. So if it doesn't work, I'll change it for future presentations. But the Plan Residential Developments now require design elements, and this is at the election of the applicant. So the applicant has proposed the following design elements to meet the requirement here. The first one being front setbacks, less than 15 feet for livable portions of the dwelling, including the front entry feature. And that has been shown in the typical lot layout. The second is that the subdivision CCNRs and setback standards do not prohibit the development of accessory dwelling units. We'll confirm that the CCNRs do not, in fact, contradict that with final plat. The subdivision exceeds the minimum density of the applicable zoning district by at least one whole unit per acre, no fractions. For example, if the minimum density... I don't need to read the example on file. It's fairly straightforward, I would think. But in this case, the minimum density is six units per acre, and they're proposing seven units per acre. And the last one is that the subdivision includes enhanced pedestrian environments, including outdoor seating areas or larger landscaping areas, and they provided two. The second finding, this proposal meets engineering standards. Public systems analysis conducted to confirm preliminary compliance with engineering standards, but this will be further confirmed with civil plan review. Traffic impact analysis wasn't required specifically for this subdivision. It was reviewed with the larger Canyon Del Rio project. Water and wastewater, both eight-inch lines for water and sewer to connect to what infrastructure's already in the road for Whitestone. And the stormwater, we already alluded to it earlier. There are two detention basins in Track A, meeting the stormwater requirements for the site. The proposal meets subdivision and land split regulations under Chapter 11-20. It meets preliminary plat procedures, application requirements, and required subdivision improvements identified in the previous slides for public systems analyses. It also meets the subdivision standards and regulations for lot, street easement, and block design. So with that, the required findings are that the City Council should provide... Shall find the preliminary plat meets the requirements of City Code Title 10, Flagstaff zoning code, City Code Title 11, General Plans and Subdivisions, and City Code Title 13, Engineering Design Standards and Specifications. The recommendation is that the Planning and Zoning Commission, based on the required findings, forwards this preliminary plat to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Ben, thank you very much for your presentation. Great presentation. Do we have questions or comments from commission members? I can't even think right now, so... Anybody else but Mary? Yeah, I'm gonna go to CJ first.
So my question is, with this development, do you anticipate that it would have an HOA?
Yes.
Because one of my problems that I talked about earlier is in the Juniper Point, that they have 38 homes, eight are short-term rentals that are allowed under their HOA. So, you know, I know there's a lot we can't do, but if we're giving concessions and doing things, if there's any way for us to influence potential HOA rules down the road, and I know this is going into a new territory, but I'm just bringing it up as something that we potentially can do about short-term rentals.
I appreciate that. Short-term rentals weren't reviewed as part of this application. We do have the applicants here if they would like to speak to it. However, it wasn't a required finding for the plat.
All right, anybody else? Mary?
Thanks. I'll just say that I support your comment, CJ. So I was actually really excited, because this is like, you know, the nerd in me said that this was our first one under the new PRD standards. And this commission was part of going through all of that with Tiffany to revise those standards. So it was, I found it really interesting to see, like, how it was gonna work. Are we seeing what we would hope would be the results of these intended changes to the PRD design element standards? So I had a question. So one of the points that was used was that the CCNR and setbacks wouldn't prevent or prohibit the development of ADUs. But yet, these are pretty small lots, you know, 2,000 to 3,000-ish square feet. Has product been designed and are there going to be ADUs? Because I would imagine with lot sizes that small, they would have to be attached and on top. I mean, how would an ADU be accommodated later after development on something that's already been built if the lots are that small?
Right. Well, I can say that ADUs don't have to be detached, so they could be interior or attached. As far as have we reviewed a specific product type that is being proposed for this plat? No, not at this stage. Again, the applicant is here. I don't know if they could give you further information as to their intent for the development of the site.
Yeah, I'm just kind of wondering, like, is it even possible for this development to have ADUs? You know, are they getting the point without the assurance that there's actually the possibility for an ADU to be built?
Hi, how are you? Again, Charity Lee with Capstone Homes. You know, as Ben mentioned, we're still looking at our product type. We do have a plan that we're looking at, and I don't know if this would be something that we would be ultimately submitting or not. But one of the products that we're looking at does have a bedroom. It's a three-story building, and it has a bedroom on the main level that's separate from the rest of the dwellings. So that potentially could be an ADU unit that could be utilized as another rental. So we specifically looked at that product as that potential to have a rental and have a separate dwelling. So that is one that we're considering. So there are opportunities to look at different product types that could offer ADUs within that development, but we're still exploring it.
So...
Yeah, so...
Oh, you have more?
So Ben, I guess my question or just awareness of, you know, are there opportunities to find loopholes in this where you can get a point without really the intention of ever having an ADU, just because you're not prohibiting them, you know what I'm saying?
Right. The language of the design element doesn't specify that you need to provide ADUs. I mean, that is fair to say that you can get that point without ever providing an ADU, because it isn't...
And not to pick apart this plat, I'm more so like trying to see how these new standards applied as we look at things that come under these standards. And so the other one was about the enhanced pedestrian environment. So when I looked on the site plan, it looked like maybe it was just a bench seating that provides the outdoor seating area or large landscape area. Could you tell me more about that and how that would achieve two points?
Right. So there are two outdoor seating areas provided. One is kind of central in Track A. You'll see that next to Lot 11. I don't know if you can...
Is it like a hardscape area, or is it just...
Can you use your pointer?
The assurance, the benches, you know, that's...
Okay. So here is one outdoor seating area.
Can you... I don't see your pointer.
In the middle?
Okay, now I see it. Thank you.
Okay. And here is the second outdoor seating area. Now, the specific design of those amenities, can you see it over on the western? Okay, perfect. The specific designs of those outdoor seating areas haven't been provided. They would be provided at a later date, likely in civil and with permits.
Okay. I guess I'm expressing, like, concern, red flags, over, you know, are we getting what we hope would like to see in these standards as things come through, you know? Anyway, just, that was it. I'm fine with this plat the way it is. It was just those design elements and how they worked and/or how they don't work. So due to the big change that we made. So thank you for accommodating my questions on that.
So my only point is that, boy, 2,000 square feet is really small. I mean, what does that give them, a place to put a barbecue? I know my daughter lived in a home that had 2451 square feet, and she had about an eight-by-eight patio that was fenced. I guess I'm asking that question of the applicant, but I just... Yeah, so it's just a very, very small space to me. I don't...
The plans we're looking at actually incorporate, we have 1,500 up to 2,300 square-foot plans, three bedrooms, full kitchens, multiple bathrooms, and one-car garages. So we're really utilizing the space and being efficient with what we have available. And so, you know, I think that was, again, you know, higher-density units, more lots, more housing for Flagstaff. So I think that's helping to meet the goals of Flagstaff's housing crisis. And so that's what we really are looking at there. But we do have plans that would have a really nice, functional living space.
So I guess my question wasn't about the living space. It's about the outdoor space that those 2,000-square-foot lots might have.
Right.
What, you know, I guess it's because it's condensed to a single-car garage that it might have more outdoor living space, I guess, so...
You know, we're meeting the setbacks, and the yards aren't gonna be huge, but there will be outdoor space available for the residents.
Okay. I'd love to see those plans at some point. Just, and... My other question is, so over in... What is it called, the property that has all the train names? What is that called?
Railroad Springs.
Railroad Springs, thank you. They have the three-story... I don't know if those are single-family or attached. I don't know how big those are and what size the lots are. Are you familiar with those?
Yes.
Do you know what the lot sizes were?
I don't know, but these are 25 by 75 lots.
Okay. Does anybody from staff know what the lot sizes were over where I'm at Railroad Springs? I'm gonna look it up.
No, unfortunately, I don't. But I, you know, I would say that they are meeting the PRD standards for the lot sizes. So I think it's obviously a challenge. Quite often, we see PRDs that don't provide nearly the density allowed because they're not taking advantage of the smaller lot sizes. In this case, we are. And yes, the PRD does allow for a 2,000-square-foot lot with 80% coverage. So that would provide 20% of the lot available for outdoor area.
Okay, thank you. I'm just looking this up on...
Yeah, I had a question. I don't see anything wrong with the 2,000-square-foot lot. I mean, you gotta try different things. But single-car garage, is there on-street parking? Or how would a second car be handled?
You know, I expect that it would likely be in the driveway. I don't have an answer for that specifically at all.
So I did look at that lot size in Railroad Springs, and they're attached. But it was 871 square feet, so that's much smaller than 2,000. Sorry, but I think they're, yeah, they're more, they're all attached, and they have a little thing. Okay. I'm just, that's me, I'm trying to picture everything. I'm sorry about that. And the attached, are they like duplexes, triplexes? Is that, are we just calling them attached?
They're attached, so it would be a townhome style. So you'd buy a single unit, and they could be attached to another unit. And it would have a shared wall or a party wall. I love saying that, "party wall." But you would be responsible for your unit, potentially with some kind of, you know, party wall agreement, I imagine.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And any other questions from the commission?
I have a question. I want to play off what CJ said, and I think this is a bigger question. Maybe Alex, you have some answers for us. But in my townhome community, the developer put into the CCNRs a minimum 30-day rental agreement, so there are no short-term rentals. And I'm very grateful for that. Our HOA keeps them out. Can the Planning and Zoning Commission make that a condition? Are we overstepping our bounds?
No, you cannot. It would only happen voluntarily if the developer wanted to do that.
So we can make a suggestion to the developer, but not a requirement?
Oh, because they're CCNRs, and those are deed restrictions, which we have no jurisdictional...
I think it becomes, it's a very delicate line to walk because we are legally restricted from doing so. And even if you were making a suggestion, you would have to be very clear, especially if you were to vote against something, that it was not tied to that ask. So it's very similar to, like, affordable housing. We'd love to see affordable housing. Can you give us affordable housing? We legally can't require it, and it becomes very dicey, maybe, when that starts becoming part of the conversation, because it raises the question, was this approved or denied based on that ask?
Thank you, Alex. CJ?
I think it does, though, open up discussion when developers come forward and say, "We're creating this," to just say, "Okay, but how many are..." Or what are your HOA requirements? Or just so there's knowledge, I guess, more than anything.
Alex, do you want to respond to that?
I think it's the same thing. Yes, it's knowledge, and especially if the case is still approved. I don't think it becomes a legal issue. I think it absolutely could become a legal issue if then you were to vote against a case and leave the applicant with the feeling that, well, they voted against it because I want this to be all... because I want this to be all condos and short-term rentals and stuff. So we just, we need to be careful, and we really need to focus on the findings. And especially with PRDs, like, yes, I'm very interested too to see how new code plays out and, and where the loopholes are and what sorts of applications we actually get. But we have to be really careful about, does it meet, does it meet the code? And if it does, does it meets, does it meet the findings? And not this, you know, well, does, you know, do two benches constitute a pedestrian amenity? Kind of conversations, it just gets a little... I don't know if Christina's in the meeting, but I imagine she would start getting a little flustered.
Yeah, no, and I'll add to that. You know, that wasn't my point to like, to vote against them because I, obviously, they're, they're meeting it. It's just, it's interesting to see where the holes might be punched in, in our, in the, in the amendments that were written and where the loopholes might be, or, you know, where things might, in a rewrite, need to be expanded upon or clarified. I think that's, that's what I was examining.
Agreed, yes.
And Christine, did you have a comment?
I just have one question, if it's any consolation. You know, historically, like Ian was saying, almost all subdivisions, I mean, I've worked on hundreds of them. In the CCNRs, they always had that 30-day restriction. And over time, some of those had lapsed because people weren't enforcing them. And now, because of the short-term rentals, especially like I used to live in North Central Phoenix, where people just kind of, after 50 years, they kind of went away. They are now re-issuing those, and if it didn't have a restriction, the owners are voting to enact new CCNRs with that 30-day because of the traffic, of the noise. So I'm thinking over time, you're going to start seeing, even if it's not restricted by the original developer, if it becomes a problem or people don't want it. Just like what happened in, what is it, Continental Country Club up here? The residents changed the CCNRs to allow short-term rentals, so...
I'll add to that, too. We've been through two votes in our, in our HOA, and it failed. It's very, they're very hard to change. They're very hard to change. And some are committed to trying to really push towards the housing issue and, and put those into their CCNRs. And some, that's not as, as much a concern, but anyway.
So I want to get back to the consideration of the preliminary plat. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that? Not about CCRs, not about short-term rentals? Do we have anybody online that, or in person, that would like to make comments? I forgot to ask if the, if the applicant had a presentation? Okay, so does anybody online have any comments or questions? If you'd raise your hand, if you do? Going once, going twice? Okay, then if I can get a motion? Okay, thank you, Ann.
PZ 23-00224-02, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission, in accordance with the findings presented, forward the preliminary plat to the City Council with the recommendation for approval.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you, CJ. Any other discussion or questions? Because I have to ask that about a motion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ben. Thank you to our applicant. Thank you, my, I'm telling you. Other business. So, under other business, we need to appoint a representative to the Water Commission and also appoint a representative to the Board of Adjustment. So, I'm going to ask if anybody would like to be a representative to the Water Commission?
Do we know when they, when they meet?
We do. The Water Commission meets the third Thursday of the month at 4 o'clock.
I might be interested in that one.
Okay. And what about the Board of Adjustments? When do they meet?
The Board of Adjustments meets the first and third Wednesday of the month at 8 o'clock. Well, at 8:30 is when the meeting usually starts. The Board of Adjustment does not meet on a regular basis. It's an as-needed thing for appeals, variances, stuff like that, and you get to work with Tiffany.
Okay, so Ann is interested in being a representative to the Water Commission? Is anybody else interested? I say, Ann, is it? Thank you, Ann. Is anybody interested to being a representative on the Board of Adjustments?
I'm still serving on open spaces, so I'm going to keep, keep there.
Eight o'clock, 8:30 in the morning, that's not a time for me.
I can do it as long as it doesn't get to be too many.
I mean, honestly, it's like once a year, maybe.
Sign me up.
Okay, CJ has, has said she'll do that, and looks like CJ's it. Okay, is that all right, that how we've done this? Okay, so miscellaneous items to and from commission members? Any, yeah, Mary?
Yeah, last night at the City Council meeting that I watched, you know, they were appointing or taking their assignments to different commissions. And I had been advocating by discussions with council members and through email that there be a liaison to planning and zoning. And they did not appoint one last night, nor did they discuss it in public. I don't really know what happened to it because there seemed to be interest and support in it. And my reasoning was, is, you know, I think City Council watches our meetings as needed, especially if we have a split vote, or maybe we're recommending to deny. It's, sometimes it's unclear, you know, if they've watched it or, or not. And I think that in the past, it has, I have felt that it's put staff in an awkward position to try to defend our decisions that are, may have gone against staff, especially if you have an applicant with you. So I was really hoping that, you know, a council member would be the liaison to at least be in charge of watching our meetings to bring context to, from our discussions into their discussions. And so since that didn't happen, you know, I think one of the solutions is, and I, and I'm going to, and I'm really going to try, I'm trying to do this moving forward, is to be really specific to the findings when I go, when I am not in support of what is being recommended. So that there's firm background and foundation for City Council to, to understand. And also, the understanding that I don't think that a lot of people realize is how much potentially a case changes from the time that we see it until the time it gets to City Council. Others, sometimes things get resolved, they get discussed in legal, there's further concessions, further discussions. And what we have voted no on may have been resolved or has, may have been softened by the time that it gets to City Council. We may have voted differently had we had that same case to look at. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there. I don't know, Alex, if you have any input to my concerns, but I just wanted to voice that.
I mean, I can certainly reach out to the manager's office and see if there were discussions about providing a liaison and what, if that's been resolved, that it's a firm no and perhaps a reasoning. So I can, I can see what I can find out, and if they're willing to share that with the commission. I do agree that a lot of times, you know, you guys come first since the first public hearing, and we're hearing from the neighbors, and a lot of times, it does affect the applicant and their application, and there are changes, or it, it brings to light issues, maybe with the project, that then can get addressed between that time, between P and Z and council. And I think that makes for better projects, so...
It definitely improves things along the way. Although sometimes I think that it makes the outcome of our vote potentially irrelevant to them by the time it gets there, you know? You know, that I, I kind of, sometimes when I watch, I get that, because I really try to follow things that have come before us when they get to council, and how they, how they discuss it, how they handle it, how they vote. And, yeah, it's just, I think sometimes they question like, why did they vote no? Or why did they have a problem with this? You know, and don't have a full understanding of what our discussion was.
And I think that, and I think in some cases that come to my mind, there was a change in the proposal between, from what you saw to what came before council, that the applicant added certain elements, changed certain elements. And so I look at it, at it as just the opposite. It makes, it makes our commission all the better for pointing out these sort of holes and weaknesses that we see in these things and encourage the applicant and council to, to modify that.
And in a way, that's what they take from our meetings. They take what the recommendations that we have, or the reasons why we voted it down and make changes. So even though sometimes I feel, you know, the City Council would love to have us rubber stamp everything, oh, should I say that on record? That, thanks, that, you know, and I've kind of, in some ways, taken it personally, and then I reflect back on it and think, well, you know, the applicant did change things because we made suggestions and we pointed out some, you know, places where they could improve.
And I think that goes back to Mary's comment about, it is very important when you're voting against a case to be clear about why you are and to make sure that it's legally tied to the findings. And being clear about, I can't meet finding one, finding two because of, and I think that just gives strength to that, to that no vote, even if you're the lone vote. I think it, it clarifies why and allows, you know, the entire community to understand why, why you voted the way you did, so...
And I also, you know, I think I've heard some comments, you know, that maybe we discuss things that are out of our purview. I mean, even our discussion about short-term rentals just a moment ago. But it does plant those seeds, you know, and I remember even in the hospital case, you know, we, you know, we asked about solar panels, and that wasn't our place to ask. We weren't asking for it, but we brought it up. And by George, by the time it got there, they had solar panels. So, you know, I don't want to, I just want to say that I, I think our discussions that are even, that get a little off, you know, sidetracked, can be helpful. And, you know, I do see those little questions that we have that are, that we don't have the ability to do anything about, but council does, they'll pop up. And anyway, just support for our continued conversations.
Madam Chair, I just have one comment, and it's just something I've noticed. I've worked in a lot of jurisdictions, and our minutes don't reflect a lot of the discussion, the summaries and that sort of thing. And if you're on the council, a lot of them, in some other jurisdictions I've worked in, actually reference some of the comments that are made. And it's a good point, like you just said, if you're voting against something. But even some of these side discussions, like when I was a staff person, we had to make sure those were in the minutes, or that they were reflected, that council person, you know, Planning Commissioner, so-and-so brought this up, and this, it was a discussion. Or like when we have a ton of people, like that one case on Lake Mary Road. There were so many, the number of people that showed up. These were the concerns, traffic, incompatibility. And at least there's a summary of it, but I noticed ours are, I don't want to make a lot of extra work for you guys, but compared to other jurisdictions, it seems our minutes are really light on what really happened.
Our, my understanding is that our minutes are just for action items that occurred, and our actual legal minutes is the recording. So, yes, it's definitely not, not as simple. You know, you, then you have to sit through it or be like fast-forwarding to the point that you want to get, but...
Is there a legal reason why?
Just a second. But I've also, when staff bring something to P and Z and then it goes to council, we write a separate kind of council report and just attach our staff report that went to P and Z. And in that, but in the council report, a lot of times, we'll talk about, you know, these were the comments that were, the, you know, the issues that came up, the comments that were made to kind of... So I think in that sense, that's where we kind of do that abbreviated, like, you know, the public was concerned about traffic and, you know, and, and provide those as part of that report to council. And legally, I'm, I'm not sure. I won't, I won't speak legally right now.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that discussion. Is there anything else to and from commissioners?
I just am so proud to be with all of you guys. I learn something every time.
Oh, thank you. I learn something every time, too. Thank you. Especially from our newer commissioners who have a lot of background in P and Z. So I appreciate that. Hearing no other to and from, I will adjourn the meeting at 6:01 PM. Thank you.